Please call the roll.
Lauren.
Here.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports as items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 18th, 2024. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of March 27th, 2024. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $467,213.15 and payroll expenses of $231,138.22. And item D, approval of ASAP energy invoices in the amounts of $25,484.82 and $37,224.57 for fuel at the air force. Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman and second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. There's a planning commission meeting to report. Item B is the Alva Hospital Authority Meeting of March 26th. Mr. Bowman.
Okay, the Senior Life Solutions Program is on track to start in July. Dr. Roberts and Dr. Tupper are staying real busy. The new mammogram equipment is installed and exams are being performed. The hospital hired a new nurse practitioner, Jessica Hyman, to help out over there. And Beetles is transitioning in the management role and things are going very well.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you. Next item is the library board meeting on April 8th. Mr. Ford.
Yeah, there wasn't anything very specific as per the short meeting. They're just working on their summer program, getting ready to get that all started up. And it was the last meeting that Sam will be at as our last days here at the end of the month. We're actively looking for a new library director.
And Sanders retiring after how many years?
Twice on.
Sanders been here a minute, yeah. She's been a great director for the library and big shoes to fill. Any questions for Mr. Ford regarding the library? All right. Item D is the Alva Arena Authority Meeting on April 2nd, 2024. The minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, just get those to Mr. Ford and he can take those to the arena authority leadership. Item E, Alva Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on March 27th, 2024. Mrs. Beer.
We had a special meeting for the Alva PD for their barbecue contest, which was approved. Our next meeting is actually going to be April 24th due to the turkey hunt the following week. So, but that was all, that was on our agenda. And I have not seen an agenda for the 24th yet.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Beer? We'll say the turkey hunt following week is this week, it'll start Wednesday. And I'll say a little bit more about it. Okay. Was no Board of Adjustments meeting to report. Regional Airport Commission Meeting on April 8th, 2024. The only thing on the agenda was routine business. So, if there were any projects or anything like that, any questions? All right. BMH Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting on April 10th, 2024. Mrs. Swallow.
We ended up not having a quorum, so we didn't have a meeting.
Okay. There was not a cemetery meeting. Finance Committee meeting on April 15th. Mrs. Beer.
So far, we're on target. So, for our general fund, we have collected as of March 2024, we have collected $5,271,726, and that is 70.8% of what we anticipated for the year. And we have expended $5,334,311, which is 71.78. And with our revenue, we have collected 71.24. So, we haven't spent as much as we should have, but we also haven't taken in as much as we should have. So, we pretty much are at a wash right now. So, but that's good because we're at 75%. And we have two, three months left during our fiscal year.
Any questions for Mrs. Beer? Thank you. City Mayor's Report. Like I said, the Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunt will kick off this week. We have nine guests. This is an economic development event that happens in several places across the state. Alva's got one of the longest-running lieutenant governor turkey hunts, but essentially the whole purpose is to bring people to Oklahoma and Northwest Oklahoma and show them what opportunities they might be able to envision for their companies or to grow their business. So, like I said, that'll kick off Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. with a kind of an educational session at Northwest Tech. And that will be regarding, I think it's a Made in Oklahoma presentation. Later that afternoon, there will be a presentation by the film industry on Film Friendly Oklahoma. And then, what's that? Oh, yeah, and there's a Main Street program. That's actually 11. The Main Street program's at 11, the Made in Oklahoma, and then the Film Friendly is after that. We'll have tours of the Freedom Area, Winoka Area, and Alva going on through all that for anybody that's not hunting. And then the people that are hunting, their guys will kind of give them a lay of land and that kind of stuff. Dinner on Thursday night, if you didn't RSVP, might holler at Jeremy's Hill. Other than that, that's about all. Oh, we had, last week, we had a phone call from Crawford and Associates. They're the people that have been helping with our accounting and they do our audit preparation. They are having a retirement for Marshall Leck, who's been our primary contact with them. And they will not be able to, where we've been using them for our monthly reporting and bookkeeping tasks, they will not be able to provide that service moving forward. They are, based on what we've spent, it looks like we can fill our finance director position that's been vacant for about the same amount of money as what we're spending with them. And the benefit of that would be that we would have somebody, if we found somebody that was knowledgeable with governmental accounting, then we would have somebody with local knowledge of what's going on here in Alva and with the city of Alva. They feel like, and I feel like also, I think Finance Committee would agree, that it would be to our benefit to have that full-time position rather than to pay them a contract where we're really not getting full-time productivity out of them. So, that concludes my report. So, we will be seeking applications and resumes to see what that looks like moving forward. But it is a position that we already have, it's been vacant for quite some time. But anyway, that concludes my report. Are there any questions? All right. Business Managers Report.
So, good news is Locust Street is done, at least from our perspective. The city's working on the 700-here block. It's tied in and they are using new, the new water lines now. So, the other company, they're all on already. You were good. He's here. So, they, another, the other contract that's done, 900, 1000 block, they're about three quarters away done. Should be done very soon and tied into our lines. And so, we'll have at least four blocks in Locust that have all brand-new 6-inch water lines and service lines. And you'll see later on in the brief closeout where that closes up that grant and we get a check of $65,000 back for what we spent on the supplies. Turf's still going on well out there at the ARC. It's exciting that the Northwestern Lady Rangers got to play a few home games on the turf right after they got it done. So, that's gone over well. The pool's on track. We've got a little communication with the Lieutenant Governor's Office about the Land and Water Conservation Grant. And I think we're going to the national level now to try to get some help with that. We're working on our telemetry bids, trying to figure out what we're going to do. I think we've got a solution to get us down to where we're going to budget for. And we'll be open to bids this week for some work that's going to go on 64 with ODOT. We've got a plan to move some water and sewer lines so they can widen those roads. So, we'll be open to those bids this week as well. That's about it.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bowman?
What about the resurfacing on Locust Street? Is that in the plan?
It is in the plan. We've got to wait for the temperature to get up. We can't do it. It's always...
Do we do that?
Yes. We're looking at contracting it out, but the company's coming out from the city, it's going to be too expensive. If it gets warm enough, fast enough, we can move the asphalt ourselves or we can go rent or lease a bed that has a heater in it, just keep that stuff hot to where we can get it through our machine. So, now, we're going to plan on doing it ourselves. We're also looking at, before we do that, we're going to put in all new curbs. I feel like it might make sense to put in new curbs if we're going to put in a nice new road, might as well have nice-looking curbs. So, we're going to do that first and then we'll come back and empty asphalt. We're making as soon as we can until then, but it's a, we've got to get one done before we can go.
Is that it started on the curbs?
Not yet. We're trying to get three bids in as soon as we can rent.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford?
Do we still have the curving machine?
It's broken down to curbs and we should have first to rent.
Thank you. Okay. Item number seven is presentation from Waste Connections regarding sanitation services for the city of Alva. What I'll mention, I guess, to preface this item on the agenda is that, you know, the nature of what we do as a council is public. And so, we need to have this presentation to help us know what all the options are for our community from a financial standpoint and otherwise. I want to, I guess, before we have the presentation, I want to, you know, share with everybody that I think that our sanitation department does a fine job. We receive many, many, many compliments on the work that you all do. We're working to make sure that as a city council, we have, you know, good information when we go to make financial decisions. And we do have, you know, budget that we have to present for the next fiscal year. So, this meeting will not include any action one way or another. And then after we hear the presentation from Waste Connections, we will have a public hearing where everybody will be given an opportunity to weigh in on that. At that, I'm going to ask Waste Connections if you guys would introduce yourself and tell us what you've got.
Perfect. I'm Brittany with Waste Connections.
I'm Kyle.
Do you guys have the rate sheets in front of you? I'll pass those around. Now, there's two options to take one of each. So, as they're passing the paper around, we put together two different plans, essentially, two different terms, a seven-year and a 10-year. And we just did it based off of the cost it would take to start up. So, you know, if we could thread out the cost a little bit longer, it saves some money. And we understand right now you guys do twice-a-week residential service. Our proposal includes once-a-week residential service, but with that is two polycarts included for that price. By including two carts for each household, we felt like that helped offset the second day of trash service. And then there's a cost under that for any additional carts over two, so three, four, how many ever the resident would need. All of these carts would be brand-new, they're 96-gallon carts. If anything ever happens to them, broken wheels, broken lids, garbage truck crushes them, it disappears, we cover that cost. So, it doesn't fall back on the resident, it doesn't fall back on the city of Alva. They're technically our property, you could say, so we would cover the cost of any damaged carts. And then, under that, we have some commercial rates listed, so we would operate a different style of truck than what you guys are currently operating. So, we're able to offer different size dumpsters. And they start from two-yard up to an eight-yard, and we would offer that up to three times a week. Kyle and Mark had followed the drivers around for a couple of weeks here, just trying to kind of get an idea of what the commercial customers would need and kind of convert that. And so, what we did to come up with these prices and the sizes is if you have a customer currently that's going a two-yard three days a week, they would convert to a six-yard one day a week. So, as you're looking at that, if you have questions on how that conversion works, we just, you know, tried to convert what they currently have with the frequency to what we could offer. And then, as far as your rural customers go, we have an option to include Hope Town...
Hope Town.
Hope Town, sorry, and up to a one-mile radius outside of city limits. Our boundaries don't go as far as your guys' do, so unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to cover everything that you cover as far as your rural customer base goes. And then, for bulky waste cleanup, it's something we like to provide in all of our communities. We think it helps clean up the town, offers people an opportunity to dispose of any bulky items. So, we would offer four free roll-offs twice a year, so a total of eight staged at a location of your, you know, wherever you would like it. And then, we have the option for extra roll-offs. If you were to go over those eight in a year, there's a cost associated if you wanted more. I think that about covers it. If there's questions you have for me or Kyle.
So, your service would go, would extend a mile radius around center of Alva or the...
Your corporate boundaries, essentially, yes.
A mile out each way?
Yes.
What options do the people have outside of that range?
So, we would recommend they could contract directly, call us, find out if we service that area. And if we do, we would set them up on a individual contract. And the reason for that is the trucks that we would have coming here are going to be at their capacity at the end of the route. So, we would have different days of the week that we could service some of these rural customers. Some of them are just too far out of our service area, so there would be other contractors in the area we would recommend they could contract through.
How many people does that entail? And is there a man number?
As far as the customers that...
Rural customers.
You know, I'm not sure.
Not 100% about that. Seem to be like there was 100 and...
I'm going to say there was 70-something.
Yeah, that's right. Just a little less than 100.
And one thing I failed to mention is currently, your trash comes to our landfill. So, we have the disposal contract. This price includes the disposal, so there's not going to be another bill that's then for disposal. This includes disposing of that landfill as well. So, that's a significant savings there just on the disposal piece.
So, how is the agreement structured? Do we, do we, you send us a bill of once a month and we bill the customers?
Correct. So, the city would bill all the customers and we recommend monthly, going back and forth, any changes in commercial customers, whether the business is closing, it's going to go on vacation for a couple of months, residents move in and out. We want those work orders to flow back and forth because we don't want to bill you for something we're not providing service for. So, each month, we would communicate with City Hall and we would know, you know, at this address, nobody's here right now occupying it, so we're not picking up the trash and we're not billing you for that trash either. And then, as far as the collections goes, if there's customers that haven't paid their bill, we usually let the city determine if that's a 60-day, a 30-day, a 90-day cutoff, whatever that may be. We also would suspend their trash service as well because it's an easy way to collect money then.
Okay, I want to get simple. How does your trash service work? I mean, I lived in Wichita and you had to have your tote in this square footage of area. Are they drive right on by?
We don't...
I can answer that. How does it work? It's not going to be a specific spot. Now, it'll be, everything will be out front. There won't be any alley service. Everything will be out front. So, just as long as it's, say, your house is right here and you're out in here to here by your driveway, whatever it may be, it doesn't matter as far as the policy. Okay, what about the folks that have trouble getting that tote to the front of their house? Because we've got a pretty good crowd that...
We offer what we call house-side service, so it's no additional cost. The city determines who qualifies for that. We don't need to know the reason, but we service communities all across Oklahoma where it's elderly, handicap, you broke your leg, so you just need that house-side service for the next couple of months, whatever the case may be. We don't need to know the reason. The city determines that, sends us the list. Our driver gets out and goes and picks up those polycarts and returns them back to where they were.
Extra charge on top of that?
No, it's the same price.
How about senior citizens?
Yes.
How about senior citizens?
It would be up to the city's discretion who qualifies under that, but yes. If the city determines senior citizens are under that house-side list, then that service is offered.
I don't want to limit discussion, but I would like us to save the public until we get to that point in the agenda so that we're observing our requirements under the Open Meetings Act.
So, the polycart, is the commercial polycart a different polycart from the residential one?
It is not.
So, out of curiosity, what is the reasoning with that being more expensive?
For the commercial businesses, we like to try and provide some savings for residential customers over commercial. In the grand scheme of things, usually, a commercial business is able to cover costs easier than a resident. They're on a fixed income. So, we try to cut that savings where we can and we try to give it back to the residents.
That doesn't make any sense to me at all. So, this would still be collected through the city of Alva? Okay. And, you know, in reference to the roll-offs, how many roll-offs are we hauling out right now? I mean, you've got two of them now there, how often do those get hauled out?
Maybe we don't haul them out. We dump them and take one with the normal truck that goes to transfer.
Okay. Do you know how many are going through though, or is there an estimation?
I'm sorry, say again.
Could you estimate the, I mean, the equivalent, or how many of those, even if you're not hauling them off, how many would we be going through?
I think we're dumping three of them at least twice a week if not more.
Twice a week?
Yeah. If not more, is that right? Yeah.
And are we losing money on our trash service and how much?
We are not losing money.
Okay.
Year-to-date, I was going to ask you what you projected our expenses would be, you know, a full year under your contract, but right now, year-to-date, our revenue is $726,000 over expenses.
Okay. Just under a million dollars.
Three-quarters.
Yeah, we have spent some things that we budgeted for too, though.
But hang on a second. Don't we need to buy polycarts and we're at a point that we need two more dump trucks or garbage trucks? I mean, we got one, and that was in the plan when I first got on, that we were going to get these guys some equipment that worked well. So, we're two down.
We've got one that we, that we motioned for capital outlink for this year, roughly $185,000. We haven't pulled trigger yet.
Will you be looking for local employment or is all your employment going to come from out of town?
So, with a contract this size, we would need personnel. Our trucks and our shop and our landfill are in Minno, so as long as the employees are willing to drive to Minno and qualify, you know, under our hiring requirements, then by all means, we would love to have somebody who already knows the town. It's a benefit to both. They just have to meet our hiring requirements and then, like I said, the trucks are parked in Minno.
As far as our transfer station that we spent, you know, quite a bit of money on, is that just, I mean, is that just going to sit out there, I mean, and not be used at all now?
If we did this, it wouldn't be used.
It wouldn't be used.
I want to be clear. We're hearing information. We are hearing information. This is not, city council's not going to make a decision today. I do appreciate you all getting it coming. What, what do you estimate the, you got our customer list, right? And you made a projection on what it would cost the city of Alva for a year? What did you...
We actually don't have a projected bill. I could figure one out. We didn't come up with a projected bill.
Okay. Well, a couple of things. I mean, we've got to take care of our people and we've got to take care of our finances. And so, I mean, those are going to have to weigh into whatever decision we make. Council members, do you have any further questions or do you guys have anything else to share?
I guess one thing I would add on our residential polycard service is I mentioned it's one-day-a-week service. We can't service the whole town in one day, though. So, we will be here probably two days a week or...
On the polycarts, it's probably going to be five days a week.
Okay, so the town will be split five ways to service it. So, if there's ever a situation where somebody forgot they were on vacation, we don't want anybody to think they have to wait an entire week. There's always exceptions to the rules. People are going to make accidents. We don't want them to make a habit of it, obviously, but we're in town. We would be in town five days a week. So, we're here to service the community and provide good customer service.
So, if they contacted City Hall, say, "I was on vacation, I didn't get my cart out, can you come by?" You guys will come by?
Yes. And it's one of those things, like I said, if we don't want to make a habit, if it's the same, you know, house every single week, obviously, there's something else going on, but we understand we've missed our trash day and nobody really wants to wait an entire week again.
How do you do holidays?
We observe Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day, so it would be pushed one service day. So, if Christmas falls on Thursday, the folks that are serviced on Thursday get Friday service, Friday service folks get Saturday.
Then we work every other one.
And just to be clear, you'll ensure that there is, if this goes through, all the equipment, all the trucks, all the polycarts, everything that's included in the contract on us?
It would be all brand-new trucks, brand-new dumpsters, brand-new polycarts.
Any other questions from the council? Well, thank you for coming up and giving us the information. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for all interested citizens of the city of Alva regarding privatization of city of Alva sanitation services. What I'll ask is if you'll, if you're able, stand and approach the podium and tell us who you are and have, and we'll hear what you have to say. We didn't establish a time limit, but we'll try to, I won't try to be rude or anything, but if we're saying the same thing over and over again, we'll make note of it and we'll try to move the meeting forward.
You open the door to the boardroom?
Yes.
My name is Larry Smith. I've lived here since 1977. I worked at Pan and Eastern Pipeline Company for 28 years and retired. I was here to comment on the trash people. They've done an excellent job as far as I'm concerned. I know that they've had some very difficult limitations put up, placed upon them. They've worked late hours. I sent them out, late hours. And some consideration, I believe, should be given to these people if this should proceed into this, is that they should be able, or they should be compensated by getting... is that, uh, they should be able, or they should be compensated by getting some sort of work. Direction of work, uh, for being hired in somewhere else. They should have that, uh, be taken care of. Possibly they should consider, uh, some wage loss up until a certain point, uh, when this takes place. I'm curious to know what this company will not pick up. I didn't hear anything, uh, to that. I think it'd be, uh, something to consider. One day a week is, uh, really pushing it. I think for especially a holiday, you know? I don't know.
I will clarify some of the things that they, that you may not have heard in their presentation. Not, I'm not arguing for or against at this point. We'll have to look at everything afterwards. But what they did say in their, um, presentation is that they would have, uh, two polycarts instead of the one that the city of Alva currently has. And, and so in theory, it's the same amount of garbage.
We're due two days now. We've got one polycart and it works fine. Just, just a comment. That's about all I've got to say. I, I came from a small town. I have lived, worked in large cities. I like the small town. I like to keep it within our, our community. And I hope we can maintain these men's jobs. I think it's important to Alva. And I think it's important to, uh, the community as a whole. That's it.
Is this where we can ask questions or we just have to make a comment?
It's a public hearing. You can, you correct me if I mistake this, but you can ask questions. We may or may not know the answers.
Right, understand.
Is that?
That's right?
Yes.
My name is Kenneth Ferris. I worked on sanitation for almost 20 years. One of my biggest questions, which was asked by Joe, was the money. What's the reason, or were you guys looking into this or did they offer this?
So we, um, it was requested of a council member last year when we were preparing the budget, what other options were for sanitation, everything from, um, changing the number of days we pick up and, and, and so this has kind of come about as, as just making sure we do our due diligence. If we're going to look at different options, we need to look at all options to make sure if, if it is, you got, you got service on one side and you got finance on the other.
Right.
Can we provide a good service? Can we do it more cost effectively? Those are the things that we need to look at and that's why this has come up. Waste Connections, uh, provides services in Northwest Oklahoma. And, uh, and so they were willing to come give us a presentation to tell us about, you know, what their company could do in our community. And it's, you know, I, we've never contracted out that service.
We've looked at it before.
Not since I've been mayor.
We have looked at it before.
Um, and I'm sure everything's changed. I mean, I've been here a little bit. I'm sure everything's changed since then. This is an exercise in diligence. We just want to make sure, I want to make sure, Steve wants to make sure that when the council goes to set a budget for next year, that they have confidence in the decisions that they make with regard to our sanitation budget. And whether that be, um, continuing on the way we're going or whether that be going in a different direction. You can't make good decisions without information.
Right.
And so this is, we're, we're getting information from the public hearing side of it and we're getting information from a contractor that could potentially serve our community.
So what about the limbs and grass? What will happen to that? Because I don't believe you guys take care of that, right?
We're, we don't have any intention of stopping that service at this time. But that conversation has not been had, I'll just put it that way. Can't, uh, council has not had a conversation about changing that service.
I also understand that when we set roll offs off at like we've done it at the grocery store, we go through a lot more than two a year or four a year. We go through roll offs like crazy. I can't see where they can compensate for that at all.
Well.
And then these guys here, who's going to be able to drive all the way to Minno to have a job? As somebody that had, not to interrupt you, Mr. Parker, as somebody that worked for a long time for the city of Alva, I just totally disagree with this. We've looked at it in the past. It was shot down and I, I just think it'd be a big mistake for the city of Alva in total. And I go through a whole bunch of reasons why. Just rather not do it on the camera.
Feel free to send us a letter. The, the, the employees are important to us. And we, you know, we've got a lot of openings in the, the city of Alva. And so, um, regardless of how this moves forward, obviously if we don't change anything, they're keeping their jobs, they're doing a good job at. But we do have other positions that we would hope that, um, you know, hope to be able to fill with employees that have been, you know, good in, in one department. We feel like they'd be good in another department too. Again, no decisions are being made here today. We, we do want to hear all the feedback though, so that when we do make decisions, we've got all the information.
I'll make a comment on that when you ask, you know, what brought this about? And I'll just be honest. I went to Steve and I said, hey, you know, I've seen on Facebook several people posting, it's maybe late at night and trash, our trash guys are picking up trash in a pickup. Or they're, you know, they don't have the equipment to do, do what they need to do. And I said, we got to find a better way. And, and now is this the way? Probably not. I don't, I mean, I mean, from just what I hear, my opinion is probably not. But I said, hey, whether it's, it's finding, um, someone that's going to have equipment that can, you know, keep our employees and, and figure out a better way to do this. But what I felt like at the time, what we were doing was not, well, it, I don't feel like it's fair, was fair to our guys to be out there and, you know, a pickup till late at night picking up trash.
Like, can we have a conversation on this? Can I stand back up here? I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how.
I don't want to shut anything down. Because I think, I do think this is important information. I do know that we also have a lot of other things. If we, if we need to have, if we need to leave here and schedule a town hall or something like that, I mean, we can do that too.
You're more than welcome to talk to me after the meeting. I'll be.
I would recommend it.
One more question then?
We consult with some of the former, you know, like KP, you know, and, you know, the other department heads, you know, that were in sanitation, if we're, whether we do.
Please reach out to them. I mean, the council members are going to make this decision. Steve Ford is not going to make the decision.
So this ain't voted on by the public then? It would be voted on by the?
It's voted on by council members.
And not the public?
And not the public.
Then I do feel we need to have a forum.
Well, this is, that's why we're having a public hearing. And, and yes, council members, you will make this decision. So you do your homework. We're getting as much information as we can get here, but you guys do your homework as well. We've got more people that want to speak.
I'm there. I also work for the sanitation, but more importantly, if y'all do move forward with this, I'm more concerned about where I live. I live right in front of the middle school that we have right here on Flynn. These guys stated that they wouldn't be picking up anything in the alleyway where most of the people that I live in is where we have to put our trash because we have people that park in front of our houses and all that. I don't know how you guys wanted to handle that. I'm curious. I put my stuff out there, some, a whole bunch of people had parked in the way. Would I be able to get that picked up or how will we handle that?
So we have communities all over that park on the street. In each case, it's going to be a case by case. We'd have to come check out the exact location and see if there's options around it. Our preference, our safest, um, recommendation is on the street. So we would, you know, either notify the homeowners, hey, trash day is going to be Monday. If you can make sure your polycart, we just need, you know, what is it, three feet for that arm to reach out safely between vehicles and mailboxes. Not every situation is going to be black and white, but we would have to, you know, come put eyes on it, come meet with the residents. There may be an alternative in that situation. Not every single house can be serviced on the street, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted to bring it up, just because I know that that middle school, it gets bad. There's not many occasions where there is enough room to be able to pull that on out in the street. So I just wanted to bring that to you guys as a challenge as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to come up and say my piece. My name is Brian Lawrence. I'm a previous sanitation driver. I left the city of Alva because of this. This is the exact reason why I left the city of Alva. Because I didn't want what was going to happen to my future. This is my livelihood. This is how I took care of my children. So I left the city of Alva. My biggest concern with the sanitation, we did this thing for a year together before I left. Biggest thing was, uh, equipment breaking down, not getting fixed properly, not having enough guys to do the job. And then, you know, you've got random guys that have left in the past, myself included, who have been blacklisted from working for the city of Alva. And when asked if they could come back, they get laughed at. My, uh, career is not a joke. These guys' careers are not a joke. I've been out there with them every day doing this job and it's a hard job. When you're out there in the snow, you're out there in the rain, you're out there in triple, triple digit weather. It's hard. You know, we've been out there in a pickup truck for the simple fact that we had a truck broke down. You know, some of these trucks that they're running, they're older trucks. They're wore out. You know, we got one guy that hauls to Minno every day. The entire town's trash every day. There should be more than one CDL driver besides the guy who does it every day and the supervisor. There should be another guy on one of them transfer trucks running that trash to Minno every day instead of making it one man's job. It, it's, it's a hard thing. I left because I didn't want my future uncertain. I've asked recently to come back and I got told no and laughed at. I would love to work sanitation again. These guys are a great group of guys. Now, I know I made some decisions while I worked here that probably made it to where I'm not allowed to come back. That's fine, but there's other guys I've spoke to in the city of Alva that would love to come back that have been told they can't. The manpower is the biggest thing on why they're out there seven, eight, nine o'clock at night.
We're not going to be able to comment on personnel issues tonight or ever, but, uh, thank you.
What does it take to get more CDL drivers? Can, if they're willing to do it, can they get their CDL so that there's more to drive the transfer truck? How can that be improved?
Training is a lot of money, a lot of time.
Costs like $5,000 or two.
They're not a lot of time, but they're out. It's doable. Career takes offers, uh, CEO thing every, very seldom.
So it's something we could look into if there were interest parties and we have time?
Right now.
Okay.
So there, there's, there's more CDL drivers out there now.
My name is Anita Strike. And the only question that I have, is there a way that we can have a town hall meeting where public can come, ask questions and get them answered? Because I didn't find out about this until today. And there's several other people that's told me the same thing, that they didn't know that there was even anything like this in the works or it was going to be discussed. And they have a lot of questions. Most of mine have been answered, thank you. So is there any way that we could do that?
I, I mean, we'll, it's not off the table. I mean, we'll see, we may get enough information here that you'll all be happy. I, I mean, I, I, it's not off the table. I'm not going to tell you I'm going to schedule it, but it's not off the table.
And again, did you have cost for what it was going to be for residential and for commercial?
We have cost.
Yeah, what they shared with us is that in year one, the bill would not increase. City of Alva would do all the billing, correct? City of Alva would do all the billing. In year one, the sanitation bill would stay the same. And then they have a 3% increase per year on a 10-year contract or a 5% increase per year on a seven-year contract. That's their structure.
Now, are these numbers that, do we bill the same as they bill us or do we?
Is there a schedule or not?
That was my next question.
We, our billing rates are our billing rates. We set those.
So, but like are these, these rates here, this is what we pay, this isn't necessarily what the citizens pay, is correct?
Correct.
Well, if they're, if they're go up 3% a year, you will pass that on to us, won't you?
That's a council decision every year.
Seems that way, you know? Nothing happens without, you know, a rebound.
I mean, if the price of milk goes up or the price of hamburger goes up.
So is gas on you? Right, and we don't have control of that.
But I will say, the council votes on that every year.
We, yeah, uh, I, I don't, I haven't, believe, I'm, I'm kind of learning here. I haven't seen the city budget. Is that posted somewhere?
Find out for sure. It should be on our website.
On the website?
If it's on our website, I'll give it to you. It's not a secret. It's posted, I think it's absolutely posted with the state.
It should be on the state of Oklahoma website.
The state of Oklahoma, it's posted. It's out there for anybody to look at.
I'd like to know. Wouldn't mind to be able to see it. I know some others that would like to know that often.
It's, it's not a secret. It's out there.
It legally has to be published.
My last question. I know that there is going to be an increase there. I've seen this happen in other cities and towns. There has been an assistant program set up for the senior citizens stuff to help them with their water bill. Would the council look into doing something like that for them, for the, for the sanitation?
If there's a program out there, I'm, I'm interested in it. I'm not aware of the program for sanitation, but if there is, I'm interested in it.
Now, the city, we can't legally charge certain people different, I mean, it can be an internal program.
We would have to participate with an outside entity.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that.
Jacoby Merrill. I currently work for sanitation. I've been there about three and a half years now. So one of the more experienced guys we have at the moment, or at least halfway there. I know all the different routes we run, all the different stops and everything. Personal note I'd like to add is I don't feel like they'd be picking up frequent enough for a lot of stops. There's a lot of places, they have six, seven barrels of trash every day that we pick them up twice a week. And even moving to polycarts that are bigger than the barrels, I just don't see it being enough to keep up with them. Sorry. They'd probably have to just tone down how much trash they make if possible. But at the same time, I know there'd probably be a lot of people upset at this based on that alone. Some people aren't as bad, of course. So there's a lot of people, they have a can, they maybe have a bag a week. But there's a lot of others that make a lot more than that.
There's definitely, and I'll agree with you, there's definitely some users of the sanitation service that get more bang for their buck than others.
That was all I really wanted to add.
Uh, I'm Montana Merrill. I'm Jacoby's wife. And I was curious about how big the trucks are because they will be picking up on the street and we have narrow streets. Like sometimes I have a little old car and it's hard for me to get through, so how would that work?
How big are your trucks? As far as the width wise, they're the same width. As far as length wise, they're probably going to be another, I'll say 10 to 15 feet longer. I'm not. What yard a truck are they? Pardon? What yard a truck are they? Twenty-eight yard truck. Twenty-five to twenty-eight yard truck. So our biggest trucks we've had are 20 yards. And you're saying 25? Twenty-five to twenty-eight. Yards.
Is that a tandem?
Yes. Thank you. Does he have more?
No, that was just a question because like I have a little Toyota and it's pretty narrow and I'll be driving up 11th and I'm afraid I'm going to hit something on the sides because they've got trucks, like pickup trucks and stuff that are pretty big parked on the streets and everything. And especially on like a holiday, that's going to be really bad.
Thank you.
Say 28 yard truck.
Twenty-eight.
Because our streets can't be able to handle that. And the chip steel streets, you're going to run a heavier truck than we've ever ridden up and down. They've already got dips and bobs and all that in them. And I know when you turn with the tandem and wheels drag, you're pulling up asphalt and stuff like that. I've seen that with our tandems, just coming down and out. And then once you get that loaded, that's going to be, how many times?
It's going to be about, fully loaded, it's going to be around, if, if we get a, depends on the weight of the trash too. Fully loaded, you're around 50, 54,000.
Four thousand.
Roughly. So you're going to look at 20, 25, huh?
Weight of the truck and that.
No, that's total, that's total weight.
I'll get that straight.
Yeah, we're looking at 26, 27 tons. Right.
Really the streets of Alva.
Is that going to, is that going to work?
So my, my question is to you guys, so say like just right out here, because we know we just redid it. If your truck damages that road and we know that it lifted up some concrete, is your company liable to fix it? Or is that going to fall back on us even though we know there's nothing out there currently and your truck drives through and it cracks and we notice it right then? Are you guys liable or are we?
There's going to be wear and tear with the trucks. They are much heavier. So if that happens, you know, unless it's completely negligent on our part, it, it wouldn't be something we would fix for one time incident. I mean, if it's something we're doing that's just, like I said, completely negligent and it's causing those ruts intentionally, then we're going to partner with you to see how we can fix this, remediate the situation from happening again, whether it's moving a dumpster. And like I had mentioned to him, there's going to be some spots where we don't service in the front. It's going to have to be in a different spot due to either the roads being too small, numerous situations, but it is a case by case and unless it's complete negligence. That's all I had to ask.
Thank you. I'd like to bring down his question just a little bit, not more or less the weight, but more or less the size. We have, I want to say about five streets. They're behind ranger mark. They do not have an alley. They don't have anything but the front of their house. There's no turnaround in these streets. How would we handle picking those up? I mean, are you, you've got one guy on the truck that you're going to have to either back through there or pull through, not trying to see anybody get stuff damaged or get hurt? How would we handle a situation like that?
Just depends on the street. Brittany said it just depends on each situation, but if it's a street that we have to pull in and back out, we do that in other towns also. It's something that we, we're used to doing.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
One of my biggest questions, and I just remembered this, I wanted to ask. Being a previous driver, I know that there are several businesses in the city of Alva that depend on trash service every day. They are six days a week. And every day that they get picked up, they are heavy. Their dumpsters are overflowing. They've got trash laying on the ground. They do a lot of business. How is that going to work?
They've got, I mean, if, if, if we had a contract with Waste Connections, according to what they showed us, they've got six yard dumpsters that they would put out and, and eight yards, eight yard, okay. And so the biggest we have is two. So, I mean, they would probably handle that with a bigger dumpster.
Yeah, but I mean, we've got some of these businesses that are sitting with two yard dumpsters that have three or four of them that are still full on a daily basis. That's a big issue if they're going to go down to one day a week.
It sounds like they can put enough dumpster. I don't think, from what they explained, I don't think there's going to be an issue with having containers to hold the trash. And they've got them, the customer will just have to, to get them.
Those are one day we get. They've had to play up to three times a week.
Three times.
Three times a week.
Commercial customers, three times a week. We'll upsize the container or whatever it is. What happens to Walmart? Do we not still take care of Walmart? I'm sure they take care of Walmart in other communities. I mean, they'll do the compactor? Yes. Okay.
Uh, one last one I want to get on, how are we going to maintain the college with their
I mean, I've, we've already looked at the college too. It's also got two yards. We would upsize the, upsize the containers where it needs to be or if there is a place in there that it has to be left at two yard. We'll just have to figure that out, how, with the college.
Is there any cause for concern about your trucks length on maneuvering any of the places they got in there?
Everything that I went and looked at, I've spent a couple of weeks over here, I don't see anything yet.
Did you take into account the fact that they're not very responsible college kids and they throw trash everywhere?
That won't change.
Are these dumpsters, are they all wheels or is it set flat?
I would say, looking at what we've seen, everything's going to be set flat. Now, if there's, if there's, if there's areas that we need to pull out, which like over here on Main Street, then we'll have wheels on them and we'll pull them out.
And you're talking about bigger dumpster in an alley and like in Community National Banks Alley that's real super narrow to get through there.
That'll, that'll be.
The rental truck that we got.
Barely fits.
Barely fits through there now.
Yes. Some of these containers, just like we've talked before, some of them will have to sit at a two yard. All right, so we've, we've heard, we've heard quite a few comments and concerns, size of the trucks, the frequency of the pickup, size of the containers, the staffing. Are there any other issues that you need to make the city council aware of or questions that you have?
On the subject of different sized dumpsters, I would like to say there are quite a number of businesses mostly, of course, that they have created specific corrals for their dumpsters. He brought up, uh, Bank Central, they have a big thing out back specifically built, iron doors or steel, I guess, but it's a big enclosure specifically to house their dumpsters. I was wondering, a lot of these, if they go to bigger dumpsters, they're probably going to have to make a whole new spot to house their trash. So I don't know how many businesses would go for the price of having to do that and move all their stuff around.
On Bank Central, it, it would house what we would need to put in. We already have that.
And I know, uh, there's a lot of different ones, of course, and they all have their own different changes and things.
We've looked at what you've got or you guys have.
Just wanted to mention that.
There is thing, one of them mentioned what you won't pick up. Is there anything you guys won't pick up explicitly?
Yeah, I mean, the obvious things, hazardous waste. We don't want chemicals, paints, batteries, anything that's going to get in that truck and combust, just like you wouldn't want it in your trucks as well. As far as residential service goes, it is cart contents only. We understand there's a transition period with that. We've done this in several communities where we either already provided the service and switched to poly carts or did the privatization. So we understand there's a, about a 90-day window, but it is cart contents only. And then as far as bulky waste goes at the roll offs, you know, refrigerators, freezer, stuff with Freon just has to be certified that the Freon was removed. But other than that, we're picking up the same stuff you guys would pick up because you're bringing it to our landfill. So the rules are pretty much the same.
One last question. You mentioned not being able to pick up like the same stuff that we can't pick up. Are you guys like looking in any of the residences getting to make sure you don't pick any of this up or, because we have to. I mean, we have residents here and I know some of them that, that know lack, but they'll, they'll put it in their, in their bag, in their trash bag, and then they'll put it in their hand. If it's not inspected by personally grabbing it, you will not catch it. You're rushing or you're loading your truck. We have it happen to us.
We have cameras on the top of the truck so the driver can see when he's dumping the contents in it. So the goal with that camera is to catch anything like that. We understand some stuff's going to be in a bag, we're not going to catch it. But hopefully, you know, that camera catches it. Sometimes they will flip the lid, they can, you know, flip the lid with the arm, take a peek in it. But it, it's never going to be a foolproof system, unfortunately. I mean, that's, you're aware, you've had to look it up to find them, but.
And I'd rather you not go through my trash.
Yeah, we don't. We do work best with the camera to try to catch anything, especially if it's stuff that's going to cause the truck to catch fire.
My next question would be is what would be the process for your truck catches fire? What's, what's your process for putting it out safely and not getting anything in anybody's property or somebody else got injured?
We're going to go to the, I can answer that. We're going to go to the safest spot that we can get to as quickly as possible and go dump it. Normally, we're out to, if it's on the edge of town or in the town, we'll go out to the edge of town or find a parking lot or something to dump it. That's the same thing as local trash companies do too. Anything that hasn't been brought up?
Well, I will say, I do want to say thank you to everyone who came out today. I know it's, it's not easy to come and stand up here and, and talk to us. And I know a lot of you guys probably feel like we've already made up our minds, we're not, we're not listening. But I'll tell you right now, what we're doing here today is we're looking to see, is there a better option? Because as council, that's what our job is. I mean, as council people, I mean, we have to look at every department and see, is there a better option? Is there a better way to do things? This is just, all we're doing is looking at it. So to the people who've came out and spoke, I really appreciate it. To our trash guys, I know you're sitting over there probably feeling like you're not appreciated and, and I hate that. And, and that, and that bothers me because you guys play a vital role in our community. And I will tell you right now, I really appreciate everything you do. The city of Alva would not run if you guys weren't putting in the long hours and doing the hard work you do, and I really do appreciate it. And, uh, and I think making sure that, that you guys are taken care of as well as we do what's most economical for our city is the most important thing. But I will tell you that, that when it comes to making this decision, making sure that, that y'all are taken care of is, is going to be a huge part of our decision because we do appreciate the hard work and everything you do for our community.
And I do, all like of that, I think we'll wrap up the public hearing, but it, it is, Steve and I had this conversation. It's one of those things where we weren't going to, we weren't, weren't going to get the information out to the council members without, you know, having it, it be a, a situation where either we, we didn't have a public hearing and we just had it as a council meeting and, and then, you know, that's not, that's not what any of you guys want. You guys want to be heard and we want to hear you. And we knew that with any discussion of change, there's a lot of uncertainty. And uncertainty is not something that we can always avoid, but when we have these conversations, we don't have public hearings all the time. We've got public comment on, on most of our agendas, but we don't have public hearings all the time. So I do appreciate everybody coming out, you know, asking questions, providing feedback. You know, just because we're talking about it doesn't mean there's been a decision been made. We can't talk about it except having a forum like this. So, um, at, at that, again, I appreciate everybody coming out. You know, if anything changes, it'll, it'll be out there in front of you. If anything, if nothing changes, probably won't hear anything else about it. And so, uh, but we do appreciate y'all coming in to give the presentation, help educate our council members and our community. And then we also appreciate our community coming out to, to share your feedback. So, thank you, guys. Item number nine. Oh, anybody wants to leave can leave. If you don't want to leave, you're welcome to stay.
Stay enjoy a riveting coffee. Thank you, guys.
Item number nine is discussion in action to approve the Alva Airport Board's recommendation to award the bid for installed jet fuel tank to Innovative Fueling Solutions in the amount of $540,272.50. This was actually, uh, we, we failed to get it on last month's agenda, but it came out of the February Airport Board meeting. Yes, February Airport Board meeting. And, um, we've received, the airport has airport funds. We also received a grant to do this project. None of this funding will come out of general fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the Airport Board's recommendation to award the bid to install a jet fuel tank to innovative fueling solutions in the amount of $540,272.50.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the Airport Board's recommendation to award the installed jet fuel tank to innovative fueling solutions in the amount of $540,272.50. Is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
I'm attending to discussion in action to authorize the mayor to sign and submit the Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Aeronautics Grant application to partially fund the jet fuel tank project. Like I said, grants related to that fuel tank project and this is authorizing me to sign the paperwork.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor and submit the Oklahoma Department of Aerospace, Aerospace and Aeronautics Grant application to partially fund the jet fuel tank project.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Beer to authorize the mayor to sign and submit the Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Aeronautics Grant application to partially fund the jet fuel tank project. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 11. Discussion in action to approve amendment number eight to the owner engineer agreement with Park Hill for professional services provided during construction. This is related to that same project. And it's additional services that are included in the dollar amounts that you just approved.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve amendment number eight to the owner engineer agreement with Park Hill for professional services provided during construction.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve amendment number eight to the owner engineer agreement with Park Hill for professional services provided during construction. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Parsons?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action regarding the O-MAG 2024 trustee elections. So, as a member city of the Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group, and this is our liability insurance carrier, so we are a member of this and technically have ownership in it, and we get to have a say in who are on the board. The candidates, I didn't print the ballot, okay, you got the ballot up there. We did get a letter from the city manager of Ponca City, Craig Stevenson, and we also got a letter from the mayor of Enid, who are both on the ballot. You know, I would say, pull the ballot back up. That would help, I'm struggling. But, you know, Mayor Mason and manager Stevenson are probably the two that I've had the most familiarity with. I don't have any reason to think that Mr. Shannon Alten-Guyman or any of the other nominees would not be fit to serve. But historically, we've kinda looked for somebody that was in north or northwest Oklahoma. But I don't have a recommendation, but I will say that Mayor Mason and manager Stevenson are the two that reached out to our community. And we are choosing two, is that correct?
Yes.
We're choosing two.
We're picking two people, right?
And if nobody has any suggestions, I would recommend Mr. Stevenson and Mayor Mason.
I'll make a motion to recommend Mr. Stevenson and Mayor Mason for O-MAG 2024 trustee election.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Swallow to elect Mr. Mason, or Mayor Mason and Mr. Stevenson to the O-MAG, or in the 2024 O-MAG trustee election. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Upstate.
Bear?
Yes.
All right. Item 13 is discussion and action to accept the REAP grant WD-23-1 as complete and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. This is the $75,000 that is for the water line or part of Locust Street.
I'll make a motion to accept the REAP grant WD-23-1 as complete and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman and a second from Mrs. Beer to accept the REAP grant number WD-23-1 as complete and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion and action to accept the lowest best bid for the 2023 Oklahoma Energy Efficiency Lighting retrofit program from Northwest Electric of $26,000. We were awarded up to $43,930, but Northwest Electric is coming in well below that threshold, and they were the lowest that we got.
Is there anything we can do with the extra money?
No, we just don't get it.
Just don't?
And there's not enough lighting projects left after we've already upgraded everything else?
Yes, this completes our lighting projects.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the 2023 Oklahoma Energy Efficient Lighting retrofit program from Northwest Electric of $26,000.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Beer to accept the $26,000 bid from Northwest Electric for the 2023 Oklahoma Energy Efficiency Lighting retrofit program. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion and action to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of one City of Alva EMS department 2003 Ford ambulance and to authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all paperwork to transact the sale. So, we just purchased an ambulance, this is the one that's gonna be taken out of service, it's the oldest, least reliable in the fleet.
When we sell that, can we put that money towards the new one?
It'll, the ambulance department is in the general fund, so, yes.
I mean, how often do we necessarily pay down the principal on lease purchase? Is that kinda what you're giving it?
Yeah, yeah, can we pay down our lease that we got on it? Since we had to, didn't we borrow?
Yeah, it's a lease purchase. So, the very first point is, yeah. So, when that goes back to general fund, we repay that lease purchase payment, and it comes out of the general fund. So, it'll kind of offset a little bit.
You probably won't bring it up to make much difference.
But still, if we could get $5,000, that's $5,000. I mean, hey, money to force the principles, money to force the principle.
We're just hoping we don't have to pay somebody to take it.
How is that, is that sealed bids, or?
We can, by law, we can do it by any means that'll get us, we can do sealed bids, we can call people and see if they wanna, purple waves, stuff like that.
I got a question, how about a small community, is it so bad that, you know, you could have it sitting somewhere, ready, you know?
It's pretty old. You want to sell it for sure.
If they can get it for probably not very much, and they have the ability to invest in it, to bring it up to snuff.
They make for great campers.
Somebody might buy it for that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to declare a surplus and authorize a sale of one City of Alva EMS department 2003 Ford ambulance and authorize city business manager and/or mayor to sign all paperwork to transact the sale.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Mrs. Swallow to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of one City of Alva EMS department 2003 Ford ambulance and authorize city business manager or mayor to sign all paperwork to transact the sale. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
So, if anybody out there wants an ambulance, contact Steve Ford. Item 16, discussion and action to approve City of Alva Resolution 2024-008, resolution of the Alva City Council amending fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget for the City of Alva. This one is to take into consideration the grant money we got from the library. It adds that in as revenue and then allows the library, is their expense item as well? Yes, allows the library that amount of money to spend for that grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Alva Resolution 2024-008, a resolution of the Alva City Council amending FY 2023-2024 annual budget for the City of Alva.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Mr. Brooks to approve City of Alva Resolution 2024-008 as stated in the agenda. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Item 17 is discussion and action to approve City of Alva Resolution 2024-009, a resolution of the Alva City Council amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget for the City of Alva. This one is for the tourism department.
Based on the budget on this, we didn't, we supposed to budget, we didn't.
They had fund balance that we intended to, and it didn't happen. But we intended to budget them the ability to spend the money they had in the bank. And so, this does that, and allows them to fund the events that they've approved to fund.
So, if after the amendment, they're still in the negative, what?
So, I did that on purpose, because even though they may say, "I'm gonna give you for your barbecue event $20,000," that person may already spent $18,000. And so, we've got a couple more events, still have to come back to the tourism tax, and basically remit their receipts. And so, we think that if you didn't spend anything, you're allocated. We'll take a look at this again in June, and if we need to change it again to get it to zero, we will. We just, we think, we didn't wanna go ahead and spend the whole, or put the whole amount in there, because we think they're gonna come back and give us some money back.
Can we budget a negative, I mean, how does that work?
It's just gonna be negative until we get the money back, so.
Can you budget for a negative, like on, I mean?
What did Crawford say on that?
They said it's fine, just offer work.
Crawford put this together.
Yeah, as long as in June, we know, well, we've got a exact picture of where it's actually gonna end up at, and we come back in and make another smaller budget limit to get it to zero. Yeah, Crawford made this amendment.
I will say that the general fund is the only fund that is required to be a zero balance, so it's not illegal.
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Alva Resolution 2024-009, a resolution of the Alva City Council amending FY 2023-2024 annual budget for the City of Alva.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Dr. Lard, to approve Resolution 2024-009, a resolution of the Alva City Council amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget for the City of Alva. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item 18 is discussion and action to appoint the City of Alva City Council President. Mr. Winters, in his resignation, also left us with a vacancy for council president. So, we need to fill that for the remainder of this fiscal year and next. So, this is where you guys discuss this.
I'll make a motion to nominate Sadie Beer as City Council President.
Thanks.
I'll second.
At least you're present, and sometimes you get voted in instead of being absent.
Well, thank you.
I have a motion from Mr. Bowman and a second from Mr. Parsons to appoint Sadie Beer as the City of Alva City Council President. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
You stand to gain nothing, I'll tell you.
You better not be absent.
Item 19, discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 250 S307B1 to discuss the annual evaluation of city business manager and FY 24-25 City of Alva and IFF Local 3782 contract negotiations.
Make a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Dr. Lard, to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes. All right. It's discussion and action regarding city business manager annual evaluation. There's no action to be taking, but we will just inform the public that the manager received a favorable performance appraisal with some opportunities for improvement and recommendations from the manager to council to help achieve mutual goals. Item, there's, okay, we don't have one for, for union negotiation, okay, so. All right. Item 22, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Weighted amount. 23 is new business, we don't have anything that qualifies as new business, remarks and inquiries by council members. After being done, we will adjourn to city council meeting and open the regular utility authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Lard?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern, all the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature and only approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one of both the authority and any trustee. Desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March 18, 2024. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, March 27, 2024. And item C, approval of the claims in the amount of $244,683.43 and payroll expenses of $54,136.90.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Dr. Lard, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item 5, discussion and action to approve City of Alva Resolution, AUA Resolution 2024-001, resolution of the City of Alva City Council amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget for the City of Alva. Jurors, should both of those be utility authority?
Yes.
I mean, it's a utility authority resolution, but it's amending the utility authority budget, and it's a resolution of the utility authority.
I think in the announcement, if someone made a motion, we'd change that to annual budget for the Alva Utility Authority, but I think the resolution's been stated, I mean, insane, it's an Alva Utility Authority resolution, so I think that would work.
I can place it there.
Can you show me the utility authority title? There's a title up there.
I've been saying.
This says, "Resolution of the Alva City Council." Can we just make that with that scribbler's note?
Yes.
Okay. So, when, you know, after we consider, if you make a motion on it, please do that. But this is for grants that we, this, I can't see it, Steve.
So, it's the $1 million of loan forgiveness that we budgeted as basically revenue.
Okay, and it's not revenue?
No.
It'll, it's just a reduction in expenses. Okay. And this budget amendment takes account for that? On the revenue and the expense side? It's budget neutral, moving it to the proper section of the budget. Correct? Correct? Zero fractions on it. Push this one. I would entertain a motion to approve the Alva Utility Authority Resolution 2024-001, a resolution of the Alva Utility Authority amending the FY 2023-2024 annual budget for the Alva Utility Authority with the utility authority being referenced in the resolution. Anybody that wants to stay submood with that?
I will make a motion to approve resolution as stated.
Second.
All right, have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve Resolution 2024-001 as stated. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, and we don't have anything that qualifies as new business. Item seven is to adjourn. We'll do that. And call to order the regular meeting of the Alva Economic Development Authority.
Lahr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature can only approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda. Place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. I may approve of the minutes of a regular meeting of, that's March 18, 2023. Correct? 24, yeah. March 18, 2024. And approval of claims in the amount of $276,790.12, payroll expenses of $19,173.75.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Dr. Lahr to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item five is discussion in action to approve City of Alva ADA Resolution 2024-002. Same thing here. This is going to be a resolution of the Alva Economic Development Authority amending the fiscal year 2324 annual budget for the Alva Economic Development Authority. Resolution on the screen is titled correctly. We, so we, okay, Steve, go for it. I don't know if I can explain this one.
During our budget negotiations, we caught that there was a grant in the ADA that was received from the Water Reserve Board, and we couldn't figure out why that was in the ADA. We finally figured it out that it was, it needed to be in the AUA, and I'm going to forget what the, we figured out was for. That was a payment for something, I just went blank, but we figured it out. And so the correct place for it is in the AUA, not the ADA. So this goes back and corrects the old resolution with this new one and puts it, not in the ADA, but in the AUA so we can properly count for it in their grants budget as grants received.
But that was not in the last resolution we approved for AUA?
No, that was in, this is back, that's not right, 23, it was 2304. Shit, I thought about that. So this is back way.
It says there is for a grant lighting project.
No, that's, that was wrong.
Okay.
So that's what they thought.
It's going to be originally.
That's what they originally thought it was for, but it wasn't, it was a payment for one of the water projects.
Gotcha.
It was, that's right, it was, it was the last payment for the line down south.
Okay.
After a change order.
Gotcha.
And we went back to the OWRB, and they kept going, we finally found something and sent to them, like, oh, okay, well, it makes sense now. So anyway, all this essentially doing is moving from AEA to AUA where it's supposed to be. And then it cleans up the AEDA financials because then there's not a grant there for the Water Reserve Board.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve City of Alva ADA Resolution 2024-02, a resolution of the Alva Economic Development Authority.
Second.
What's your QCD? Oh, I guess amending, I guess I needed to say that, amending FY 23-24 annual budget for the City of Alva.
AEA.
AUA.
AEDA.
AEDA.
All right. Second there again, second.
Mr. Pennington, are you satisfied?
Do you want to start over?
I think that's all right.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion from Mrs. Beer and a second by Dr. Lahr to approve the Alva Economic Development Authority Resolution 2024-002, resolution of the ADA amending the fiscal year 2324 annual budget for the ADA. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
All right, there's no new business, and we are adjourned.